Good, good, good.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I would ask that you please silence your electronic devices at this time. I am Mayor Michelle Disler. I will be chairing this meeting. I will do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Zimmerman.
Present.
Councilmember Neighbors.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Kimling.
Present.
Councilmember Meyer.
Present.
Councilmember Adrian.
Present.
Councilmember Sanford.
Present.
Councilmember Constance.
Present.
Thank you. I think there are scouts in the audience. If you would like to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
(Inaudible)
If you'd like to introduce yourselves real quick, tell us what troop you're with.
Thank you.
Next, I'll explain our procedures for public input. During the meeting, I will offer the opportunity for public input. If you'd like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I will ask you to state your name and address for the record, then you may offer your comments. So that members of the audience can hear your comments, I would ask that you speak directly into the microphone. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes. No person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. After you're finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names who vote in minority, so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Neighbors.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I don't want to remove anything, however, I note that Items 7, 9, and 10 all have to do with special use permits for holiday sand and gravel, and I just wonder if we could get just a little bit of background on why there are three of them.
Paul Chaffey, Planning Director. There are three special use permits for holiday sand and gravel for activities that they've been undertaking along the river. The first one is an older SUP that was approved back in about 1997. It's north of 43rd Street, which is this area. Here's K-7 Highway. This is Powell Drive. The West Link Development's starting to occur on this property here. The space is shared with the city of Bonner Springs. It's approximately 193 acres in size, 16 Bonner Springs and 133 in Shawnee. The land has been dedicated to the cities of Shawnee and Bonner Springs for park purposes, and most of the developable ground is in the city of Bonner Springs. Extraction began in Bonner in 1996 and began in Shawnee in 2001. The extraction in this area is mostly complete. They're currently reshaping the walls of the lake with overburden from the site and should be completed shortly, so they're just shoring up mostly along the southern and eastern edge of the property. So that was our first special use permit. Then the second and third special use permits are newer. The first special use permit came approximately to this location, and then the second special use permit came in later with ground further to the south. It's located along Frisbee Road, south of the railroad tracks. Extraction began in 2013, and it's approximately a 20-year project to create an approximate 150-acre lake. You can see where the extractions occurred. Actually, today, it's down across what used to be 47th Street in this area in here. They've dedicated 329 acres, including the lake and parkland, to the south and west of the city. The city already had acquired approximately 90 acres on the west side of Frisbee Road, the Riverfront Park, so will actually have a nice area from about this point, wrapping up to the railroad tracks. Holiday sand will have about 168 acres on the east side and north side of the lake to develop as a mixed-use business park. I'll draw a diagram to show that. The area that they'll develop as a business park is in yellow. They'll be using some of the overburden that comes from the pond to raise ground out of the 100-year floodplain, and then the rest of the ground at some point in time will develop as a riverfront park. So that's why we have the three special use permits and two good park projects from land that's actually dedicated to the city that we didn't have to purchase.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion has been made. Seconded on this item, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is mayor's items. I would like to welcome DeSoto City Clerk Lana McPherson and Vice President of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, along with some other area city clerks, to make a very special presentation to our city clerk, Stephen Powell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Lana McPherson. I am the city clerk in DeSoto, and I am very excited and proud to be here this evening because one of your very favorite people and mine has been awarded the Kansas City Clerk of the Year Award. He was quite overwhelmed and surprised on Thursday, and it's quite a thing. So I want to take just a couple of minutes, Mayor, if I may, and give your council and the audience a little bit of background about this award. It's presented each year to a city clerk or finance officer who has made significant contributions to the Kansas Association, to the clerk profession, and to their city. The award was named in honor of Mildred Vance, the former auditor and city clerk and finance officer of Parsons, Kansas. She served her city from 1948 to 1988. Mildred was instrumental in developing and promoting professional education programs for all city clerks and finance officers at the state and national levels. She was one of the first 100 clerks to receive the Certified Municipal Clerk designation in 1972. She was later accepted into the Academy for Advanced Education and also served as a director of IIMC. She strongly believes city clerks and finance officers should contribute to their communities as well as their jobs, and she unselfishly gave of her time and talents in church, community, and civic activities. To be nominated for this award, you have to have all of that criteria, and a member of five judges look at all of the candidates and all of the nominations that are received. It's valued on a point system. The selection committee consists of two prior-year recipients of the award, the Missouri City Clerk and Finance Officers Association President, the Illinois Clerk Association President, and one of our own League of Kansas Municipalities members. So once those people turn in their nomination and the points are tallied up, the winner is named. So Stephen Powell, MMC City Clerk, Shawnee, has been selected as the recipient of the 2018 Mildred Vance City Clerk Finance Officer of the Year Award for the state of Kansas. The award was announced at our 68th Annual Kansas Clerks Conference this past Thursday. Stephen began his career in municipal government in the Shawnee Public Works Department in 2002. He was promoted to Deputy City Clerk in 2006, and then as City Clerk on February 9 of 2009. In 2010, Stephen served as Clerk of the Board, Chief of Staff for the Board of County Commissioners in Johnson County. He served in this capacity until November of 2012, when he returned to the city of Shawnee as the court administrator. He was then reappointed as City Clerk in February of 2014. Not only does Stephen serve as City Clerk, but he still manages the municipal court as well. In addition, he is also responsible for the senior transportation program. Vicky Charlesworth, the interim city manager for Shawnee, states, and I quote, "Through Stephen's position of city clerk, his outstanding leadership, innovation, commitment to public engagement, and improving people's quality of life has made the Shawnee community a better place." And personally, I've known Stephen since he came into the clerk world, and he's definitely put a place in my heart. So it is my great honor and a pleasure. Stephen, congratulations, the 2018 Kansas Clerk of the Year. I'm so proud of you.
Good job.
And I did bring some people.
Oh, you're going to introduce some people.
All of you city clerks from adjoining communities, will you please stand? This is a little bit of support that Stephen has, and it's multiplied, but thank you.
Okay, I'll keep this brief, because I'm nervous. But, you know, I was totally shocked when I got this award. I had absolutely no idea, and it just goes to show what sneaky people we have here at the city to surprise me like that. It was endearing, and I appreciate it so much. And I have no idea what I said when I accepted the award, and I told people I hope I didn't curse or say something inappropriate, because I have no idea. But what I need to say, and what I've thought a lot about since I got this award last week, is how thankful I am to the city for supporting continuing education and professional development and leadership opportunities and promoting people and believing in their employees and providing them with the resources they need to do the work on behalf of the city. And I love working here at the city and being a part of the community, and I'm just very grateful for this. It's unbelievable.
Well, it is extremely deserving, as your professionalism and the kindness that you exhibit every single day to our residents and everyone is just unmatched. So we are very proud of you.
Yes.
Good night, thanks for coming.
Next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public items. Item number one is to conduct a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 1836 declaring the intent to issue private activity bonds, IRBs, in the principal amount not to exceed $3,400,000, and approving a Shawnee Entrepreneurial and Economic Development seed agreement for the ServiceMaster DSI. DSI Holding Corporation intends to acquire, improve, and furnish a 46,326 commercial building at 8450 Cole Parkway to relocate their headquarters to Shawnee. The resolution is declaring the intent of the city to issue IRBs, to allow the developer to purchase construction materials on a sales tax exempt basis, and receive an exemption from ad valorem taxes over 10 years on the property. Pursuant to policy, they have also formally requested to be considered for a forgivable loan for relocation costs and local contribution credit in the amount of $181,740, and eligibility in years 2 through 5, a series of annual 1.5% pay-as-you-go opportunities based on job growth targets through the seed program. A public hearing is required. There are four actions required. The first is to conduct a public hearing. I'll accept a motion.
I move to conduct a public hearing.
Motion has been made. Seconded on this item, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. We are now in a public hearing. This is a formal public hearing required by law. The public hearing will begin with a presentation from Ann Smith Tate. After Ann's presentation, I'll ask councilmembers if they have any questions specifically related to the presentation. I will then ask if there are any comments from the public. Once the public hearing is closed, we will have council discussion, followed by a motion. Ann, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come tonight. My name is Ann Smith Tate. I am the President and CEO of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. We have been working on this ServiceMaster project for quite some time, so it is my delight to be here tonight to talk to you about it. As you mentioned, ServiceMaster will be consolidating some of their offices around the metro into one regional headquarters. It's also the national headquarters for their large loss division, and then the regional headquarters for Kansas and Missouri, and they will be located over in Perimeter Park. Initially, they will bring in about 100 jobs and plan to hire approximately 100 new jobs over the next 10 years with an average salary of around $67,000. So great jobs. So that is kind of just a breakdown. Year one, about 100; years 2 through 5, 48; years 6 through 10, another 60. So that whole, that new payroll is just over $13 million, and their capital investment's going to be right around $3.5 million. As is custom, we do a cost-benefit analysis on these projects. The new city taxes and revenues that this company will be bringing in are $1.2 million, just a little over, and the estimated cost, including the abatement amount, is just a little over $500,000. So that benefit-to-cost ratio equaled out to a 2.8 to 1. As we've discussed in the past, what we look for is anything greater than a 1.3 to 1, which is where we really consider that to be a project that is beneficial to the community. So certainly coming in at 2.28 is an excellent cost-to-benefit ratio. The payback period, which just really sort of says, you know, how long will it take us to pay back the amount of that tax abatement over the next 10 years, or over the, how long will that take? It's about two years. So you can see again that this is very beneficial and pays back very quickly. All the other taxing jurisdictions that we analyzed in this process showed very similar results. So just a breakdown, so the abatement timeframe is 10 years. This one is a little bit different than some of the ones we've talked about in the past because they are moving into an existing building, so they will continue to pay the same amount of taxes that they would have paid, that that building paid in 2016, 2017. What this abatement allows for is that incremental difference. They will be investing quite a bit into that building, so there will be some increase on that. Over the 10 years, it's about a 67.5% abatement. But again, that amount that they're paying today in 2017 and 2016 remains the same, so there is no real loss in the sense of anything being retracted from existing taxing jurisdictions. So that abatement over the 10-year period is $749,198. The seed forgivable loan, again, there's three components to this one. There was the payroll rebate, which was $135,360, and then they will both be using the local contractor, so they will be using a Shawnee business to do some of the work in their expansion. They'll also be contributing to a local charity. Both of those are eligible for a half percent forgivable loan based on their payroll. I think, oops, sorry. This just shows where their new headquarters will be, out in Perimeter Park, very close to one of the other projects that we've been talking about, the expansion of NASDAR and the industrial speculative space. So lots of activity out in that area, lots of great projects, high salaries. You know, in talking with the CEO, they had looked quite, a lot of communities to find the right location to consolidate their headquarters, and ultimately landed on Shawnee because of our business-friendly environment and access to employment, transportation, all of that. So great project.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions or comments? Ms. Constance?
Can you explain just the numbers on the state impact? It was .73 to 1.
Oh, okay.
The cost-to-benefit. I was just curious, because everything else, you know, came out as a positive.
Right.
Except for the state.
So they received some incentives from the state of Kansas, and those, just in looking at how that worked out for this one in particular, was a little bit lower than what the impact would be for the county or for the city, and I believe also the school districts were, I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I'm kind of working off memory, but were well into the range that we consider to be beneficial. So I think the state is reflective of those state incentives that they received. Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Thank you. Seeing none. The second action is to close the public hearing.
I move we conclude the public hearing.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Third action is to adopt Resolution Number 1836. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. Final action is to approve the substantive terms of contract Number 20180028 with ServiceMaster DSI for a seed agreement. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance Number 3216 authorizing the issuance of federally taxable private activity revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $6 million related to the Comfort Inn and Suites Hotel project. Resolution Number 1751 was adopted on January 26, 2015, which expressed the intent of the city to issue IRBs in one or more series for the benefit of Sri Ram J Ram property. These bonds are for the Comfort Inn and Suites Hotel, generally located at 16500 Midland Drive. Property acquired and proceeds will be exempted from ad valorem taxes for 10 years, and ordinance is required to issue the bonds. Recommended action is to pass ordinance Number 3216 with the effective date of the ordinance on the approval of a temporary certificate of occupancy. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is mayor's items. I would like to welcome DeSoto City Clerk Lana McPherson and Vice President of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, along with some other area city clerks, to make a very special presentation to our city clerk, Stephen Powell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Lana McPherson. I am the city clerk in DeSoto, and I am very excited and proud to be here this evening because one of your very favorite people and mine has been awarded the Kansas City Clerk of the Year Award. He was quite overwhelmed and surprised on Thursday, and it's quite a thing. So I want to take just a couple of minutes, Mayor, if I may, and give your council and the audience a little bit of background about this award. It's presented each year to a city clerk or finance officer who has made significant contributions to the Kansas Association, to the clerk profession, and to their city. The award was named in honor of Mildred Vance, the former auditor and city clerk and finance officer of Parsons, Kansas. She served her city from 1948 to 1988. Mildred was instrumental in developing and promoting professional education programs for all city clerks and finance officers at the state and national levels. She was one of the first 100 clerks to receive the Certified Municipal Clerk designation in 1972. She was later accepted into the Academy for Advanced Education and also served as a director of IIMC. She strongly believes city clerks and finance officers should contribute to their communities as well as their jobs, and she unselfishly gave of her time and talents in church, community, and civic activities. To be nominated for this award, you have to have all of that criteria, and a member of five judges look at all of the candidates and all of the nominations that are received. It's valued on a point system. The selection committee consists of two prior-year recipients of the award, the Missouri City Clerk and Finance Officers Association President, the Illinois Clerk Association President, and one of our own League of Kansas Municipalities members. So once those people turn in their nomination and the points are tallied up, the winner is named. So Stephen Powell, MMC City Clerk, Shawnee, has been selected as the recipient of the 2018 Mildred Vance City Clerk Finance Officer of the Year Award for the state of Kansas. The award was announced at our 68th Annual Kansas Clerks Conference this past Thursday. Stephen began his career in municipal government in the Shawnee Public Works Department in 2002. He was promoted to Deputy City Clerk in 2006, and then as City Clerk on February 9 of 2009. In 2010, Stephen served as Clerk of the Board, Chief of Staff for the Board of County Commissioners in Johnson County. He served in this capacity until November of 2012, when he returned to the city of Shawnee as the court administrator. He was then reappointed as City Clerk in February of 2014. Not only does Stephen serve as City Clerk, but he still manages the municipal court as well. In addition, he is also responsible for the senior transportation program. Vicky Charlesworth, the interim city manager for Shawnee, states, and I quote, "Through Stephen's position of city clerk, his outstanding leadership, innovation, commitment to public engagement, and improving people's quality of life has made the Shawnee community a better place." And personally, I've known Stephen since he came into the clerk world, and he's definitely put a place in my heart. So it is my great honor and a pleasure. Stephen, congratulations, the 2018 Kansas Clerk of the Year. I'm so proud of you.
Good job.
And I did bring some people.
Oh, you're going to introduce some people.
All of you city clerks from adjoining communities, will you please stand? This is a little bit of support that Stephen has, and it's multiplied, but thank you.
Okay, I'll keep this brief, because I'm nervous. But, you know, I was totally shocked when I got this award. I had absolutely no idea, and it just goes to show what sneaky people we have here at the city to surprise me like that. It was endearing, and I appreciate it so much, and I have no idea what I said when I accepted the award, and I told people I hope I didn't curse or say something inappropriate, because I have no idea. But what I need to say, and what I've thought a lot about since I got this award last week, is how thankful I am to the city for supporting continuing education and professional development and leadership opportunities and promoting people and believing in their employees and providing them with the resources they need to do the work on behalf of the city. And I love working here at the city and being a part of the community, and I'm just very grateful for this. It's unbelievable.
Well, it is extremely deserving, as your professionalism and the kindness that you exhibit every single day to our residents and everyone is just unmatched. So we are very proud of you.
Yes.
Good night, thanks for coming.
Next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public items. Item number one is to conduct a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 1836 declaring the intent to issue private activity bonds, IRBs, in the principal amount not to exceed $3,400,000, and approving a Shawnee Entrepreneurial and Economic Development seed agreement for the ServiceMaster DSI. DSI Holding Corporation intends to acquire, improve, and furnish a 46,326 commercial building at 8450 Cole Parkway to relocate their headquarters to Shawnee. The resolution is declaring the intent of the city to issue IRBs to allow the developer to purchase construction materials on a sales tax exempt basis and receive an exemption from ad valorem taxes over 10 years on the property. Pursuant to policy, they have also formally requested to be considered for a forgivable loan for relocation costs and local contribution credit in the amount of $181,740, and eligibility in years 2 through 5, a series of annual 1.5% pay-as-you-go opportunities based on job growth targets through the seed program. A public hearing is required. There are four actions required. The first is to conduct a public hearing. I'll accept a motion.
I move to conduct a public hearing.
Motion has been made. Seconded on this item, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. We are now in a public hearing. This is a formal public hearing required by law. The public hearing will begin with a presentation from Ann Smith Tate. After Ann's presentation, I'll ask councilmembers if they have any questions specifically related to the presentation. I will then ask if there are any comments from the public. Once the public hearing is closed, we will have council discussion, followed by a motion. Ann, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come tonight. My name is Ann Smith Tate. I am the President and CEO of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. We have been working on this ServiceMaster project for quite some time, so it is my delight to be here tonight to talk to you about it. As you mentioned, ServiceMaster will be consolidating some of their offices around the metro into one regional headquarters. It's also the national headquarters for their large loss division, and then the regional headquarters for Kansas and Missouri, and they will be located over in Perimeter Park. Initially, they will bring in about 100 jobs and plan to hire approximately 100 new jobs over the next 10 years with an average salary of around $67,000. So great jobs. So that is kind of just a breakdown. Year one, about 100; years 2 through 5, 48; years 6 through 10, another 60. So that whole, that new payroll is just over $13 million, and their capital investment's going to be right around $3.5 million. As is custom, we do a cost-benefit analysis on these projects. The new city taxes and revenues that this company will be bringing in are $1.2 million, just a little over, and the estimated cost, including the abatement amount, is just a little over $500,000. So that benefit-to-cost ratio equaled out to a 2.8 to 1. As we've discussed in the past, what we look for is anything greater than a 1.3 to 1, which is where we really consider that to be a project that is beneficial to the community. So certainly coming in at 2.28 is an excellent cost-to-benefit ratio. The payback period, which just really sort of says, you know, how long will it take us to pay back the amount of that tax abatement over the next 10 years, or over the, how long will that take? It's about two years. So you can see again that this is very beneficial and pays back very quickly. We had gone through multiple alternatives and alternative locations for this. We did meet with the council members and came up with this particular site as a joint location that would provide community service, again, to the whole community for water pressure as well as fire storage and emergency storage for the community. The specific question about elevated tank versus underground, so elevated tanks are typically located where, where it's right size and right for the need of the system. And we do see this as a green solution. It does minimize fuel storage and emissions because we don't need to have a generator on-site. It has lower energy use in that we don't really have any mechanical equipment that requires power as part of this solution. It is quiet. There are no pumps or a generator as part of it. It is a low-cost alternative as well for, as far as the cost of ownership. So again, no mechanical equipment. It literally floats on the system, so the water goes into the top of the water tank. That's where the pressure is sustained and where the storage is, and it floats off the system when it's needed. So at peak hour, when we have a lot of sprinkler systems coming online, that's typically when these types of facilities engage. It is the lower cost, lower maintenance cost. We do have service reliability and redundancy. Again, the benefit of this is if we were to lose power throughout the system, this would sustain us during that power outage to give and ensure that there is pressure throughout, throughout this area. It is also less disruptive. We have fewer site visits on it because there is less maintenance required for it. And our staff has come up with a joint access agreement, which is part of your packet as well, to, to access the site for operations. The smaller, it does have a smaller environmental footprint. It is less property that is actually required for it. It is less, there's less area and less impact for roads and stormwater as far as the impermeable area for stormwater on the site. It is, again, right size for the needs of the system and the needs of the community. Water One serves over 425,000 customers in the area. You are one of 17 cities that we serve, and it is, we are proud to be able to do that for you and to provide reliable, clean water each and every day.
Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, I have a few more questions. Thank you. So when we talk about the lower cost, that's a cost for Water One, not a cost for the city of Shawnee? Correct? Like the lower cost that you're discussing here?
So the cost itself is for the cost of the construction. So it is a lower overall construction cost. But again, we see this as a lower impact as well to the community.
And when you say right size for the need, is this water tower going to be the same size or larger? Is the water, it's larger than the water tower that's at your facility now? Is that correct? Or is it about the same size as that tower?
So, the facility on Renner is actually a 2 million gallon tank. This is a larger diameter bowl. So this, the pedestal is the concrete piece that goes up to the top where the Water One sign is, which is the bowl of the, the actual tank. That bowl will be a little bit larger in diameter, and the actual pedestal itself will be shorter because we are on higher ground.
So are, so it would be effectively the largest tower then in the Water One service area?
To the state, yes.
Are there, as you look at the water needs throughout all of your service area in Johnson County, are there any other areas that you've identified, the elevated tank versus underground storage? Or are we kind of the only ones here?
No, there are several other locations where we have elevated storage, and there are other locations that we have planned and programmed for. So again, we have other elevated tanks in service in 2020 at K7 and K10, as well as Lackman and 199th Street. We do master plan every year, so we have a five-year outlook on 40 years total to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community, and there will be other elevated storage throughout the system.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Jenkins?
Just a couple of comments. The fact that this will be an elevated water tank rather than in the ground would also, as you mentioned, you did mention, I want to emphasize that a little bit, within the event of lost power, we still got water coming. And I think it's, it's something that's very useful, especially in an area that's susceptible to ice storms and high wind damage and things like that, that people can still turn their water on and, hey, it's nice to go, still take a shower or whatever, or be able to use it for cooking. So, you know, I'm not really crazy about these towers all over the place, but there's some definite benefits. And then we talked about cost. There's a direct correlation between the cost for Water One and the cost for us as a customer. So if that cost is substantial, obviously they've got to pass it on to the consumers. And they're not going to just write a check for it or something. It's going to pay passed on. So, looks like a pretty good project, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, the microphone. I'm Renee Gregg at 5218 Meadow Suite Lane. I'm actually a new resident as of September. My question is, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but is there any way to do more research on this based on, because I had never heard of this before, some of the questions, and I apologize, I don't know your name either. But she asked some really good questions about perhaps doing, because the comment that I appreciated was the cost to Water One versus the cost to the residents in the city. Is there any way to do more research to validate that that is the best option, or if there is anything else that would be a better option, so it isn't obtrusive? And since it is a larger one than anyone that's out there, what would be a better? Because I think, and I apologize, this is the first time I've heard of it because I just read the notes, so I'll think that, I don't know if that's the policy on making a decision tonight, but to get more information before you do.
It's already come before committee, so that's why it's at council now. I mean, the council certainly can take a different action tonight, but it's already had a full discussion amongst the council at committee.
I just know the one that is out south is kind of big and obtrusive, so if you're going to have three more after that, it does seem like it's something that I would think it could be more information versus just putting them up without double checking.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Here, Michelle.
Yes, can I just make a quick statement before the motion? I just want to thank 101. I am appreciative that I know this is better than the Riverview site, which is directly in a residential area, but I continue to be frustrated, and I think the folks in my ward are frustrated that they're going to have the largest water tower in the county when there are other water storage facilities throughout Johnson County that are going below ground. And that is incredibly frustrating to me, and I think a lot of my residents as well. So I appreciate that this is a better one, but thank you.
I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilmember Meyer and Adrian voting in dissent. Item number four is to consider adopting resolution number 1837 and passing ordinance number 3217 authorizing staff to acquire easements on the Flint Street Reconstruction Project number 3432. This project is on the city's capital improvement program for construction in 2018. On March 19, 2018, the governing body approved a Phase 2 contract with the design build team of Emery Sapp &amp; Sons, Inc., Schaefer, Klein &amp; Warren, to prepare final plans and perform the reconstruction. Authorization to acquire easements is now required. The total project cost is budgeted at $2,287,150 and is funded through the street improvement program. There are three recommended actions. First recommended action is to consider approving staff to acquire easements on the project by initially extending easement acquisition compensation offerings calculated by partial value offers based method identified in the council memo. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion. Still move?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Second recommended action is to consider adopting resolution number 1837 to acquire easements on the 34 tracts of private property identified in the easement acquisition summary table. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Third recommended action is to consider passing ordinance number 3217 to acquire easements on the 34 tracts of private property identified in the easement acquisition summary tables. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number five is to consider passing ordinance number 3218 levying maximum assessments west 53rd Street Extension Improvement District in connection with the construction of Fire Station 74. Governing body approved resolution number 1833, which established an improvement district to pay the cost of an extension of west 53rd Street in connection with the construction of Fire Station 74. An ordinance is required to levy assessments as agreed upon for construction of the road. The recommended action is to consider passing ordinance number 3218. Is there any discussion from the council? Mr. Adrian?
Yes, I have a question. I was reading through the packet, and I was looking at Johnson County Appraiser, looking at the, the land, and to me, it looks like the assessments are going on land that's not already constructed upon, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we're all looking at Joe to make sure he points his head, but yes, that's true.
So if that's the case, will that hinder future development with having any special assessments already there?
I'm not much of a development expert to answer that question, but this was, this was, as you requested, the property owner, and this was negotiated in this manner by the property owner. The city actually, the amount of the estimated cost to build the road was actually reduced from the purchase price when we negotiated the acquisition of the property. So as a property owner, soon-to-be property owner, the city did, we took into account the assessments when we purchased the property. Anything else, Joe, that we're?
Joe Serrano, Citec Rock. In terms of future development, it could, of course, hinder future development because there's an add-on assessment. But, but it was petitioned by the developer, and again, this is in connection with that track that will be purchased by the city for the fire station. So we thought it was a workable solution. But, but the answer to your question, council member, yes, it possibly could hinder future development just because there's add-on tax.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I was clear and understand the question. Any future development down there is going to require this road to be in place anyway. You can't have future development to the, to the south, or, I'm sorry, to the north without this road being in place.
That is correct, to the north, and it shows to the south as well, where the future possible development did not go through. That's what I was asking about, because it would not need that road.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items from the planning commission meeting of February 21, 2018. Item number one is to consider approving SUP 04821802, a special use permit for Golden Hour Home Daycare located 21806 West 62nd Street. Their February 21, 2018 meeting, the planning commission voted 9-0 to recommend that the governing body approve the special use permit subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items from the council committee meeting of March 6, 2018, chaired by councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one is to consider passing ordinance number 3219 and ordinance number 3220 restricting the sale of drug paraphernalia in vape shops and limiting the location of vape shops to be the sole business in a freestanding building in zoning districts where the sale of tobacco is, tobacco products is allowed. The council committee recommended 7-0 to approve restricting the sale of drug paraphernalia in vape shops and 6-1 to limit the location of vape shops to be the sole business in a freestanding building in zoning districts where the sale of tobacco products is allowed. Two ordinances are required.
Thank you. The first recommended action is to consider passing ordinance number 3219 restricting the sale of drug paraphernalia in vape shops. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, there are two different items on here. To save time, can I address both of them at one time, or should I address just one, sit down and come back?
Can you address them both within five minutes?
I can sure try. First of all, just for the record, I quit smoking 12 years ago. I think that's when I first started being involved in city council events. And I'm not a fan of illicit drug use, so I don't want anybody to think that I should move to California or something. As far as the establishment of vape shops in standalone buildings, my only, I have two problems with that. Number one, standalone buildings are usually expensive to occupy, and most of these shops are not very large, and I just cannot visualize any developer building small standalone structures for them. So actually, I think it's almost a backdoor way of banning them from the city. The other problem I have is that the ordinance is based on the city of Overland Park ordinance. And I remember when we were talking about what we wanted from a new city manager when we had that conversation a few weeks ago, it said, "All alternatives." And I thought it would be kind of nice to see what other cities are doing other than just Overland Park, because if we followed in Overland Park's footsteps, well, gee, six people here wouldn't have gone to Washington DC last week because Overland Park didn't send anybody. So I would like to know what other cities are doing with regards to zoning for these shops. That took care of that part. All right. Now let's talk about drug paraphernalia. As I said, I'm not a fan of drug, illicit drugs, no way. And I believe that when a law enforcement official makes a stop or what have you and sees a crack pipe on his seat and there's definite drug residue there, you got a piece of paraphernalia. Sees a bunch of empty syringes and a person is not a diabetic or does not have any other medical reason for it, you got paraphernalia. My problem is just the term paraphernalia. And the reason for that is, to me, that's kind of ambiguous. So some of you are going to laugh at what I'm going to show you, but just for the heck of it, I think it's kind of interesting to see how certain things can have dual usage. Somebody walks into a truck stop or a convenience store and wants to get their significant other something nice while they're there buying their Coke or Pepsi or whatever. So, is that what I'm supposed to do? So they get him a rose, one of these glass tubes. But somebody had any illegal thoughts, those glass tubes that carry that rose could be used as a crack pipe, guaranteed. But by the same token, the person buying it does not necessarily know that. They're just bringing it home to their significant other to say, "Hey, honey, I appreciated the meal last night," or something. It's another style. And you can find those in truck stops and convenience stores all over the United States. So let's go to the next case. Sure, some of you have heard the term blunt. Blunt is where someone takes the tobacco out of a cigar and fills it with marijuana. Well, the history on it is because Phillies, big cigar manufacturer, was the first one to come out with a blunt, just the size and stubbiness. Do we consider anybody that sells Phillies blunts to be selling drug paraphernalia? Again, I'm talking about the ambiguity of the term. This is a dual-use item. And please don't laugh too hard at these, but this is a fact. We've all heard of huffing. Huffing is where paint, an aerosol paint, is sprayed into a receptacle and people hold it up and they get high and what have you. Believe it or not, if you do your research, you'll find out that one of the most common uses of athletic socks is for huffing. Here's a picture from a TV show, is a joke, but it's a fact, and the most common one is paper bags. Maybe that's one of the reasons why California is trying to get where the plastic bags are going to paper bags, because they love that kind of stuff out there. I'm almost finished. Folks have barbecue grills at home, you want to clean them up. So what do you use? You use chore girl, chore boy, chore boy, sorry. But that's a very common item to be used as a filter for crack pipes. But again, if somebody has that in his possession, is it a drug, piece of drug paraphernalia or are they taking it home to clean up their grill? Again, to me, it's the ambiguity. And last but not least, oh, I got two more here, I'm sorry. Let's get on Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. I don't think there's a law enforcement officer around that hasn't seen a teaspoon used to eat up and smoke and misuse certain drugs. Again, we're not being specific. The other thing, and you can buy this on Amazon and a variety of places, I don't know if you can see it up there, that's one of those whipped cream making machines. Some people might even have them at home, make whipped cream for your espressos and your lattes. The nitrous oxide capsules that are used there in large quantities can give a person a heck of a high. And you can actually go into Amazon, instead of buying them in a twelve or twenty-four pack, you can buy them in a three-hundred pack. They're legal to buy, but do they have a nefarious use? Yes. And last but not least, and I didn't bring you in a picture of it, if you know of anybody in your family or friends or what have you that walks around with loose shoelaces, there's a reason for it. It's all known that people take these rubber bands, not rubber bands, but these rubber tubes to pine on their arms to make the veins pop to inject. If they don't have a rubber tube, they can use a shoelace. So if you know of anybody that's got a loose shoelace in their pocket, that's probably what they're using it for. So I'm not trying to be a wise guy here, I'm not trying to create problems. And I think if we can get rid of the ambiguity, and for those of us who are old enough to remember Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart, many of you here probably don't, he was appointed in the fifties by Eisenhower and was replaced by Sandra Day O'Connor in eighty-one, and he retired. And the discussion was regarding pornography. And his comment became very famous. I can't describe it, but I know it when I see it. I think we have a similar situation here. And I'd just like to see less ambiguity in that. And I'd also like to see a review of the standalone concept for the vape stores. And I hope I didn't waste too much of your time by covering both items.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience can comment on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Irving Person. I own Flatland Vapes at Shawnee and two-twelve Neiman Road. Like he said on the drug paraphernalia ordinance, as a shop owner, I see no issue with that. I don't think we should sell it. I've been in business on my fifth year, never selling any of it. I don't need it, it's not of use. What I do have a problem with is the standalone building requirement. Because, like you said, it's designed as a de facto ban where I cannot afford to move my two-thousand-square-foot shop into a standalone building. Now what happens if I lose my lease? They've tore down two strip malls at Shawnee Mission and Neiman Road. And if I lose my lease for any reason, now I'm just out of business. The other thing is when my landlord finds out about this ordinance, when my lease due up, she knows I'm trapped. So my, she triples my rent. I have no choice but to either pay it or move out of Shawnee. And that's kind of where I have a problem with the standalone thing. Independence, Missouri, limited the number of tobacco licenses in the city. So like, instead of vape shops can only be in certain locations, we can only have a certain number of vape shops. I do agree, some of them have popped up on the same corner of Shawnee. That might have been a failure on zoning. I don't know if that can be looked at and say, hey, there's already two within three hundred feet of here, we don't need a third. Or that's not my department, I guess. But I think we should look at limiting maybe the number of businesses instead of the location. I'm not sure any citizens have complained about the locations, just the, maybe the numbers. Oh, and as far as the ordinance saying vape shops only, I'm wondering what legal says about that because I have a Kansas retail tobacco license. My license is considered the same as a seven-eleven, a QuickTrip, a standalone tobacco store. So we're pretty much just targeting vapor-only shops. And that's kind of my questions on that ordinance.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member Meyer?
Yeah, thank you. I think if we're discussing, it sounds like we're kind of wading into both ordinances. So just a bit about the ordinance regarding zoning. I do share some of Eric's concerns about this because I think when I've, I'm concerned it's not specific enough. When I've heard from residents who are complaining about it, they're talking about the proliferation of the vape shops, not so much the location of them. So I actually reached out to the mayor of Independence this morning to chat with her about their ordinance, and they do limit it by the number of people. So they've kind of put a hard cap on the number of vape shops that can come to the city regardless of where they are. And perhaps that is something, it's kind of interesting to me what, about whether we're being the most precise. And I don't feel like the ordinance we have to consider tonight is maybe the most precise way at getting at what our underlying problem is. So I would be in favor of perhaps tabling this for a while so we can have our legal folks get a better understanding of what it is we're trying to get and maybe look at some options outside of the Overland Park one that we've had initially, now that we've gotten a little bit more information about this. Just that when we do it once, I want to make sure we're doing it in a way that's getting to the heart of what we're trying to accomplish.
And I would add, though, that the complaints on the location were the ones next door to Little Monkey Business. So there were several resident complaints about that specific location. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, I think I strongly concur with Councilwoman Meyer's comments. I think that was very well stated. And I have some concerns as well about the freestanding building. I don't know if I'd mind if that was going into the future, we did that. And I know you would say, well, the ones that are already there would be grandfathered, but are they really grandfathered? Like you brought up an instance, well, his landlord could hold him hostage with his rent, knowing that the way he's going to move out, I can really rip him off here because he's not going to build a separate building to this. So that would, it was subjective to that. Say the shopping center closed out for some other reason. I know we lost, you know, a whole shopping center on Corvair. So what's to say? I got my business going and suddenly they closed down, or the owner of the place just shuts down. Now I'm out of, I'm out of a place to keep my business. So I don't know if we should be thinking in terms of grandfathering the space or maybe grandfathering the owner until this time. Because now if he goes out of business, say Eric here goes out of business, and then three years later, he wants to go back into that business, well, I'm sorry, you lost your grandfather at that point. You may have to get a freestanding building. But I'm thinking in terms of grandfathering the owners rather than the building that they're in necessarily. But I concur with the idea of just taking a little more time, kind of hammering this thing out, make sure we got the actual, all the things in there that we want to have in there. So I would like to discuss this some more and work on it some more.
Did you want to make a motion to退掉all?
Could we move forward with the ordinance around drug paraphernalia at this point and then come up with a more precise language like this Meyer talked about? The location?
Also, you know, if we're going to postpone this and table it at this period of time, so there isn't some type of a mad rush to get in here ahead of time to be grandfathered in, can we put a freeze in this also to stop any new ones from coming in at this period of time until we make a decision?
It's amazing how you guys can come up with questions we don't anticipate. Oh, yes, you tried very hard all day long to come up with something on this. I'm assuming that the general, in general terms, moratoriums are upheld if they are found to be in the interest of the public health, safety and welfare. And if the governing body is actually working toward a legitimate solution or legislation in terms of that specific item that is to be addressed instead of intending to adopt the moratorium and then never taking this up again. And somebody mentioned to, or the original motion thought was to table this. And rather than table it, I think it should go to a specific committee agenda for some discussions so that we can show that you are working towards a legitimate legislative purpose. And Lisa, I think was just about to say, these are normally, they have to be of a reasonable duration. So you can't set it for. You could adopt an ordinance to do so and I think you could probably do that without an ordinance if that's what you wish to do. It just, it has to be a short and reasonably, a term that is reasonable and proportionate to the harm you're trying to address. And so it needs to have some type of a definite limited purpose. You can't just set it for next December and take the matter up.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, and as we move forward with this, because I think we are moving toward the tabling or something, I think the idea of sending it back to committee might be the best bet rather than tabling it. So I would be in favor of that. But the other point that was brought out by the race car owner and like Councilwoman Myers was the idea of maybe putting a cap on the number of stores based on some per capita number in the city. I think that's a very good suggestion. I think it's only going to pursue and make that part of the discussion when we send it back to committee.
So that being said, in regards to the drug paraphernalia, I need some type of motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Second recommended action is to consider passing ordinance number thirty-two twenty, limiting the location of vape shops to be the sole business in a freestanding building in zoning districts where the sale of tobacco products is allowed. Any discussion from the council? Mr. Meyer?
Before I make the motion, and feel free to stop me for being out of order, but it seems kind of germane to the topic we're on. As we're wrapping our minds around all of this tobacco and alternative tobacco and all of that, I did note that the Topeka judge has ruled against Topeka's tobacco twenty-one ordinance. So I wonder if, as we're, I'm just trying to group this all into a similar policy issue. So I'm wondering if that might be something we want to consider putting a pause on until we get some, I guess, judicial conclusion. I imagine other cities in the metro here are going to be challenged in that lawsuit if Topeka has been. So I just want, I don't want us to be in a position where we're making an ordinance that we're then going to be legally challenged and have to incur the legal ramifications of that. So I just want that on the table as well. So it might be out of order, but felt relevant.
Mr. Neighbors?
I believe the AG made a ruling, a similar ruling that was in conflict with the Topeka ruling. So there seems to be in two different places a lack of consensus. And again, I would agree with Stephanie, but you know, I don't know that we need to go out and break new ground on this because it's going to be, we just have to come back and revisit it probably either way.
I do think we, and I've heard from a number of citizens on this as well, I think it's an important topic for us to take up. I just want to make sure we do it at a time that we're not wasting city resources to do that.
I will accept the motion.
And I would make a motion that we would table a decision on ordinance thirty-two twenty. And I guess, well, I'll retract that. I make a motion that we refer it to the May council committee meeting. Is that enough time? And also put a hold on any new vape shops receiving a permit to open in the city, however we want to word that. You okay with that? How would you like me to say it?
I think we know what you meant. I'm gonna, I'm looking at Paul, you know, when these things come up at the last minute, we've got some really experienced staff here, Lisa and Paul. And I want to make sure that either of you two, I'm not aware of any, I know there's no statutory requirement, I'm not aware of any case determined that a moratorium had to be done by ordinance or resolution. I think it can be done by action of the governing body. Are you both all right with that? Lisa has something to.
I'd really prefer it to be, that you probably need to put a limit, it's six months, nine months, so that there is an end date and you're working towards that. And then if you're working towards that and need to extend it, you extend it for a small period of time. So I think you need to put a time.
Okay, yeah. Or till the end of eighteen, twenty eighteen. So I would make a motion that we re-refer this to the council committee for further discussion. And then the interim enact a moratorium on any new vape shops until the end of twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item is staff items. Item number one is to consider approving the plans and authorizing staff to bid the pool filter and chemical feed system replacement project for the Thomas Sudert Aquatic Center Pool. The Thomas A. Sudert Aquatic Center has served as the premier aquatic venue for Shawnee residents since its original construction in nineteen eighty-seven. The original pump room servicing the lap pool and the facility chemical feed system remained unmodified during a remodel in two thousand and two. Since that time, the filtration system and general conditions of the pump room have declined. Final plans are complete and staff is requesting approval and authorization to bid. The recommended action is to consider approving the plans and authorizing staff to bid the project. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider bids from Dynamic Sports Construction to resurface the Civic Center gymnasium floor. The current gym floor in the Civic Center was replaced in nineteen ninety-six. Dynamic Sports Construction purchased the company since that time, right of maintenance since that time. They also have a contract with TIPS, enter local purchasing system for synthetic floor resurfacing products. Because this is a purchase using a government contract and the compatibility of the product, Dynamic Sports Construction was the only contractor asked to submit a bid. The bid from Dynamic Sports Construction is fifty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars. The recommended action is to consider accepting the bid from Dynamic Sports Construction. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved, seconded.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider approving final plans and authorizing staff to bid the Civic Center balcony replacement project number thirty-four fifty. Civic Center balcony is on the southeast side of the building, is needed replacement. Final plans are complete. Estimated total cost of the project is sixty thousand dollars funded in the facility equipment reserve fund. Project is now ready to bid. Recommended action is to consider approving final plans and authorizing staff to bid the project. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve, seconded.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to consider contract number twenty-eighteen zero-zero thirty, the renewal of annual software lease and maintenance for Out Systems. The city signed the first Out Systems agreement on March thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Out Systems is a software platform that replaced the aging Lotus Note software. Staff is recommending the renewal of the contract in the amount of fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars per year. Recommended action is to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number five is to consider approving the purchase of network switch hardware components on May two thousand seventeen. The city released Phase One request for proposal for the replacement of the city's network switch hardware components at various city facilities. Only two vendors responded, the governing body awarded the purchase to Alexander Open Systems and approved staff's recommendation to not issue a second RFP for Phase Two. Staff has negotiated the Phase Two purchase with Alexander Open Systems in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars sixty-five cents. Recommended action is to consider approving the purchase. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number six is to consider approving addendum to contract number two thousand seventeen zero-zero-two-two, the two thousand seventeen mowing contract. On February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, the governing body approved the two thousand seventeen mowing contract with Kansas Land Management. Contract allows for two additional one-year extensions. Staff has identified seven additional locations to add to the contract for a total contract amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. Recommended action is to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the addendum. Is there any discussion from the council? Mr. Jenkins?
Just curious, what was the cost of this contract last year?
Just curious, what was the cost of this contract last year?
The approved contract in two thousand seventeen was one hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-two cents.
Roughly about sixty thousand?
Fifty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Five hundred and twenty dollars. And we've got seven additional locations, those are real large locations.
They are. Stephen F. P. up there. The largest location is on Woodland Drive at fifty-first street with twenty-one acres.
I'd assume there was some adjustment for inflation or whatever also.
The contractor actually did not ask for a contract increase. He has the availability to ask for up to three percent, but did not.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number seven is to consider approving revisions to Policy Statement Nineteen, placement removal or relocation of streetlights. Staff is recommending revisions to Policy Statement Nineteen to allow streetlight petitions to go directly to the city council for approval instead of first going to committee. Kevin Manning is here tonight, if anyone has any questions. Recommended action is to consider approving the revisions. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item number eight is to consider approving final plans and authorizing staff to bid the sixty-three twenty-nine Halsey Culvert Replacement Project number thirty-four forty-five. Final plans are now complete. The existing culvert, located primarily on the Hope Lutheran School campus, failed in July of two thousand fifteen, causing a large sinkhole. Replacement is planned to be completed during the summer of twenty-eighteen, before school begins in August. The project is ready to bid. The recommended action is to consider approving final plans and authorizing staff to bid the project. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Moved to approve, seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Next item is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-month of frames for March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of four million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Miscellaneous council items. Does anyone on the council have an item they would like to discuss? Mr. Adrian?
I've heard from a few residents along Riverfront Park that people are going down there for shooting practice, they're using it for basically open range, for any sort of target practice, and people go down there walking their dogs, there's Boy Scouts down there, and those types of things. So this is the second time I've heard it, once when I was running for election, and then this time again. So I'd like to possibly see what we can do about that.
Yeah, it's a known problem. Ms. Meyer?
I'm just picking back off of that, I think maybe, I'm pointing at Neil now, sorry, we discussed, maybe we'll see that, yeah, so I think, yeah, both of them, I'm just pointing in that corner, yeah.
I figured there was, I just wanted to bring it up to the council's attention again, so.
Thank you. Any other council items? If there's no other items, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned, adjourned.
Motion's been made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes, we are adjourned, thank you.
Think if we use it all the time?
Yeah, I get.
All righty.
Yeah.